Good evening, everyone. We will start our meeting here at 6:01 in Council Chamber. I believe we have one of remote electronic attendance.
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of James Patrick Schmidt at the Committee of the Whole and City Council meetings of April 18, 2023, due to first, excuse me, personal illness or disability.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Thank you. Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went. Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
All right, welcome to the meeting, Alderman Schmidt. Board appointments are next. The mayor's appointment of Kate Schaefer to the library board to fill the unexpired term of Sue Blackall to expire May 31, 2024. And tonight, this number four, our presentation of civilian service awards is being pulled by staff so that all recipients can attend. And what, as I understand it, we will work to have a quote "off-site" celebration or proclamation. We'll do this, I'll work to meet at the high school, for example, and honor them somehow before the school year is out. So that is one change to the agenda. Public comment this evening?
Ryan Bakary.
Okay. Okay.
I'll be sure.
Thank you.
Your Honor and council members, I'm back tonight to, again, to ask for consideration on the zoning of our one-piece property. Last meeting, I was here too. Originally, the consultant said it was not industrial. Staff thankfully corrected that at the end of meeting. It is industrial. We've been on that property, I've got an aerial photo, since at least the 1960s. But the issue with that is, at the end of the day, nothing will happen to that property without us being involved. You know, if you change the zoning grandfather, the problem with that from our end is, we can only do the use that we're doing on the day that the ordinance is codified. We can't do any of the uses that we've done in the past on that property. So I ask you to consider leaving that piece of property and the one on the river, which staff has been great to work with, is already recommended. Leave those the way they are for now. At some point in time, if there's a development, we'll either come to the city or the city will come to us. But at the end of the day, you can't develop it. It's our property. So that's all I ask for your consideration on that other piece. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There's nothing else for public comment. We are at number six, question on the agenda. I've already noted pulling item 4.1. The next item pulled is item 12.1, approval of the minutes. The COW council minutes of April 12th are being pulled due to a scrivener's error, and approval of executive session minutes of April 11th, and appointments made during the Committee of the Whole on April 18th remaining. Okay. And the last item being pulled is item 17.1, a resolution for special event applications being pulled by staff to revise the parade route and will appear on the April 25th agenda. They just needed the correct attachments for the public to peruse. Okay? So we move to our COW agenda item 7.1, a resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to terminate the existing contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc., in order to accept and execute a new five-year contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc., for in-car and body-worn camera systems for the police department in the amount of $1.5 million. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I am joined today online by our Axon account manager, Jen Skousen, and she's gonna speak to you in just a couple of minutes. So I appreciate her joining us remotely. So council, to give you a little bit of a background, to catch everybody up, I know some of you are long in the tooth and have been here for a couple of these contracts. But our body camera or technology that we have purchased through Axon dates back several years. And Axon is the number-one company in this space. They dominate the market. They had over $680 million of revenue in 2021. I think they're over a billion in 2022. They have a fully integrated suite of products. Moline first purchased body-worn cameras in 2017. We also have Tasers, helmet cams, and Fleet cameras that are all Axon products. They all have some version of cloud-based storage, which is very important because these are very voluminous in data retention, data storage. And so David really appreciates that it's cloud-based and not onsite storage. And our legal department has the basic version of the redaction software that we're also looking to improve. But one thing that I wanted to point out to you, and this, we're gonna go through, this is a very expensive contract and a lot of things for you to consider here. But quality is extremely important when we talk about body cameras and our Fleet cameras. Certainly no more than in this space is it true that you get what you pay for. Axon is the number-one product in this market because their frame rate is identical to the human eye, and the feel of view from the devices is very similar to what a human eye sees. That's important because we don't want something that misrepresents, the video that misrepresents reality. And that does happen with some other products. So, so, I'm sorry, on this first page, I'm just gonna point out, we see a helmet up there for our tactical teams, an officer with a body camera, Taser in yellow, our physical body camera, Fleet cameras, and then obviously the redaction software. So to give you a little bit of a background, the city of Moline has been with Axon for many years. It was in the late 1990s, the first iteration of Tasers came about, they were about the size of hair dryers, I think. They were very cumbersome, the technology's come a long way. But this was the advent of less lethal devices and different methods that were available to law enforcement. Axon has perfected that and advanced it through various different iterations. And in 2017, we came online with both the body-worn cameras and the Fleet cameras. I'm certainly proud to say that Moline was one of the early adopters of body-worn cameras, one of the first agencies in this area to have body cameras before that was really even a talk of them being mandatory. In 2018, they came online with the helmet cams that were specific for our tactical team. They gave a different body advantage so that the clearer picture, clearer view, out of the way of all the tools that a tactical team uses. And then in 2020, as you know, we suffered COVID pandemic and budget cuts, and Axon was very, very good to us, allowed us to defer payments and rewrite the contract in 2020. And we knew we would be back here today because our Fleet contract expires this summer. And that's why we're bringing this to you today, is to try to consolidate all these contracts, get all of them together, take advantage of bundled discounts, upgrade our technology, and get them all together. So certainly, this is expensive. It's expensive technology. But I want you to understand, and hopefully that you agree with me, that this is an investment in professional policing. There is a statute that requires by 2025, all municipalities our size have to have body-worn cameras. So I want you to understand that in this contract, the only thing that we're legally required to have is the body-worn camera part. The rest of it is not required by law. Some of it is regulated by law, but it's certainly a best practice, and it's an investment in risk management. We have Fleet cameras and helmet cameras that are not required by law. Tasers are not required, but their use is regulated by the law. That's gonna be important when we talk about the new features in the Tasers. And I had a conversation today with our risk manager. We went through a lot of statistics, probably about back 20 years, and it's clear that body-worn camera and Fleet cameras have reduced Moline law enforcement liability claims significantly since the body-worn cameras have been in use. And workers' compensation claims and law enforcement are better evaluated and managed by video, as well as misconduct and policy complaints are better evaluated and managed with this technology. So you might also be wondering why this cost is hitting us now, and is it comparable? The Rock Island Police Department has Axon products and various different contracts. They are at $1.1 million, and that's prior to the Fleet 3 upgrade that is included in our contract that we have here. So they will be in a similar dollar position in about 2025. And Addison, Illinois, just recently signed a $3.5 million contract for 10 years. So we're right in line with our comparable agencies with staffing and devices. So some quick highlights, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jen. This contract has improved technology. The body cameras that every officer has will have the ability for live streaming and GPS. That's important right now when we have GPS that is attached to the vehicle and the officer gets out of the vehicle. The ABL that the dispatchers see only puts them at a last location of the vehicle. We don't know where they're physically at. We will now, with the body camera being attached to their body and the GPS being attached to that device, and then we'll also have the ability to livestream in both this and Fleet 3. Why is that important? Certainly, as supervisors, we can drop in and livestream something as a crisis situation or perhaps a vehicle pursuit to make better decisions on whether to discontinue the pursuit or continue the pursuit, or any other types of significant crisis things that can be managed from a command post or from another remote location. Taser sevens, we are on a very old platform of Tasers that we have hodgepodge together for several years. I think we have over 100 Tasers in the building. Some of them work, some of them don't work. They're on a platform that is discontinued. We continue to buy discontinued products to try to piece them together because we weren't in a financial position or a contract position to upgrade it. So Taser sevens will be a part of this. And the exciting part about the Taser 7 from a risk management or management perspective is that they now will be integrated with the body camera. So when the officer deploys the Taser out of its holster, turns it on, it will automatically turn the body camera on. The other thing is that Taser is assigned to that officer and that officer only. We will not be sharing the devices. And so all of the data will sync with the body camera and then with our cloud-based system, and then we'll have all the metrics, how long the sparks were engaged, how long, if there was a test, you know, all the different data that can be extrapolated from the Taser device, and will be uploaded into a secure cloud storage. Jen might expand a little bit on the metrics and random audit features that we'll have available to us for supervisory oversight and review. And then we'll be moving towards AI-driven redaction software that will significantly cut down redactions for our staff members that are in charge of that, and then we'll have updated Flex 2 helmet cams. By doing this, and by, right, you know, in the last few years, we've been kind of, my term, hodgepodge-ing this together and buying these different products and having them on different life cycles, we'll be bundling these products together. And by doing so, we would be purchasing $2.3 million, and by bundling them together, Axon is providing us a 28% bundle discount, and that's reflected in the contract that's in your packet there. So Jen, if you're on, I'd like to turn it over to you to maybe catch a couple of things that I may or may not have hit on.
Thanks, Chief. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes.
I apologize in advance about the video. The system is not letting me turn it on unless I completely exit and re-log in, so I just, otherwise I would join you via video. Chief, you did a great job. A couple of key things I wanted to touch on. One, the Respond Plus with the live streaming. The way that we built our live streaming is the officer has to actively be recording for the live stream to be initiated. So you get real-time access to evidence that you would have in our digital evidence management platform once the video uploaded, but command staff can't just log into any body camera or in-car camera to livestream it at any point if they're not recording. So it does protect the officer's safety from that perspective. The AI redaction tool, typically what we hear from our records clerks is it takes them about four hours to redact every one hour of video. And with our AI tool, it brings that to under an hour per one hour. So it's a significant time savings, which allows them to fulfill FOIA requests faster. If there is a critical incident, we can get that body camera footage out to the public faster and just provide that transparency. And then Chief mentioned different reporting metrics. With this contract, you'd also be getting access to our performance tool, which has really easy-to-understand graphs and charts to ensure that both the body camera and the Taser program are in compliance with the agency's policy. So it will say, is the activation rate accurate? Are they testing their Tasers before every shift? Are they tagging their videos for their calls for service? And this actually has an automated call-for-service tag to, again, alleviate the burden on the officer of having to assign all these videos and not forgetting to ensure that there's compliance with the policy. And ultimately, with Axon, our goal is to provide tools holistically. So we invest over $100 million every year in our research and development efforts, with a large majority, 85% to 90% of those improvements coming from both law enforcement and community feedback. So that way, we can provide tools that keep the officer safe, but also provide transparency to the community, because ultimately, the community is the one that law enforcement is serving, and so we serve both of them.
Great.
What questions? One other thing is the audit trail. So everything in our system comes with an end-to-end audit trail. It'll show every single action with the user, the IP address, date, timestamp, and what action was taken. So it is admissible in court. It makes it really easy to just, you know, keep that chain of custody with every piece of evidence to say this is what happened, by who, and how it was protected throughout the entire process.
Thanks, Jen. A couple of other things about Fleet 3 I wanted to bring up. So we are on Fleet 2. We do have the possibility to stay on Fleet 2 and refresh that, those devices. However, then, public works has to deal with all that. We would move to Fleet 3 and get the new technology, the new cameras. They will come down and install all that, eliminates all the public works staff to have to be involved in that, of course, obviously, have that training. Fleet 3 also comes, we still, we currently have two cameras in the squads, one that monitors forward-facing, and then one that monitors the occupant compartment in the backseat. That would also be in Fleet 3. And then Fleet 3 also has integration with license plate readers. So the license plate readers in the squad cars will alert the officer of a hot-list vehicle, so one that's stolen or being wanted for some other reason, without them having to type it in. I know our risk manager's been talking to me about that for a long time, about the dangers of having to type in a license plate while you're driving. And that integrates in a secure database and FLOC. You may have heard the term FLOC before. Most of the surrounding municipalities have moved to FLOC LPR and have purchased stand-fixed locations of FLOC. We haven't gotten into that. I'm a little concerned about the cost for the size of agency that we have here. It would probably be a little bit cost prohibitive, but this gives us the ability to potentially target those stolen vehicles that we're not seeing on a regular basis on patrol. So those are the highlights of the new features. And a couple last things. Certainly, we are recommending approval of this contract. Would like to point out that it has zero impact to our fiscal year budget in 2023. It actually is a little bit lower than we have budgeted now for our current contract. Axon is the current and preferred vendor. We currently have 152,000 videos in our cloud right now. We use this every day. They're using it right now. We use it every day in administration, reviewing things, complaint management, all sorts of things, and we have a lot of videos in there now. Body-worn cameras are required in 2025. Again, other features are not. We're getting a major Taser upgrade, major Fleet upgrade. The LPRs won't come until 2024, I should have mentioned that. The Fleet upgrade won't initiate until we sign the contract, and then the installation is about a year delay because of the supply chain issue. So we know that, that's in the contract, and we know that those will be delivered next year. And the livestream, GPS enhancements, and then, of course, the bundled contract that saves 28%. So for that, the staff recommends approval of the contract with Axon.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer. And second to Alderman Williams. Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Jen, I just had a quick question, and this doesn't impact my vote, but with the livestream, is that saved in the cloud or is that just for viewing in real time? I'm really asking if it's kind of a secondary backup in case the unit is destroyed or, you know, whatnot.
So the livestream is actually just real-time viewing of the video that's actually currently being recorded. So once that video is offloaded from the body camera, yes, you'll be able to see it. You'll also be able to see in the audit log who livestreamed it and for how long. But it's not adding any additional evidence. It's just giving real-time access if there's an incident that's going on.
Thank you.
So to clarify for everybody, just so if you're not familiar with how the body camera works, my body camera is on right now, and it has a buffer in it. It wouldn't be until the officer activated the device until it's recording. So what she's saying is that you can't livestream until that device is recording. And then, of course, what you were thinking is, would it save to the cloud? Yes, because it was recorded.
But it wouldn't save in real time.
Immediately, correct. Now, we are looking at some other, we'll talk about it another time, about an LTE system for the city, and in that instance, it may upload if we get to that broadband system for the city.
Chief, can I add one quick thing to that?
Yes.
So with the Respond Plus functionality, if you do have a critical incident, you can wirelessly offload that evidence via LTE from the body camera. So you could get that into the cloud immediately out in the field.
Thank you, Mr. Macias.
Thank you. So they turn it on at a certain point. What is, is it like our policy that they take when they turn it on?
There's some state law that covers that as well as our policy. But the other thing is that Axon has several automated triggers. So for example, if a squad car's lights, emergency lights are on, it immediately turns on all devices in the vicinity. Again, a Taser, if an officer has a Taser in this new program, Bluetooth activated, you know, flips a switch, it will turn their body camera on and anyone in the vicinity of it, of there. Jen, I don't know if you, can you comment on the distance that you have to be away from?
Yeah, so you need a clear line of sight. So typically, we say up to 50 feet. We've seen some activations up to 100 feet, and that Bluetooth signal is sent out for 30 seconds. So if a squad car pulled onto the scene 15 seconds after the Taser was turned on, then their cameras would also activate when they pulled within that vicinity.
We have some other triggers that automatically turn, like a car's speed will trigger the camera, you know, things like that. But another kind of day-to-day officers, you know, just out on a walking beat, let's say, if it's that, and all of a sudden he has to make a law enforcement contact, then he has to turn it on. Now, there are some other triggers, gunshot detection, things like that, that will automatically kick it on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a hand over here?
He answered it.
Okay. Mr. Waldron.
Bob, this is a significant increase for '25, '26, and '27. Have you incorporated that into the five-year plan, budget plan, you and Carol?
I did. Is Carol here?
I thought that we had.
So we haven't incorporated it into the plan, but I did meet with Carol and talked to her about it, and she reviewed the contract and said that it would be absorbed into the budget without concern.
That is correct. That was her response.
And she was very happy that there wasn't an impact to this year's budget.
Yeah, I bet. Because it's significant.
The increase is significant enough when you take a look at it. The question is, is what technology do we want in the squads and in the officers given today's society and what's going on? And I'll be honest with you, I think that this not only protects them and the city, but it also protects the people they come in contact with as well.
And I can also tell you, Alderman, the, when I arrived here, there was no plan. They had purchased the body cameras, half of some grant money, half of some forfeiture money, and it wasn't in the budget, and we've been struggling here for the last about four years to try to get all these things worked together, try to get them on one plan. There's a lot of things that you don't, like the Taser expenditures have not been in this contract, that are now in the contract. So we've got all these plates that are spinning out there that we're trying to get. So you do have a more realistic picture of the expenses that the city is facing.
So Chief, I do appreciate the 20% off base, right, with bundling this. Can you also continue to look at some of those DOJ grants that pertain to body cameras and et cetera that you and I have shared before to see if we can use that in future years that we're paying for this?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, the one that I, that we have our eye a little bit more on, and I don't want to give anybody any false hope, but there is some talk about the state releasing money for the cloud storage. I did talk to Jen that she'd be able to invoices and itemize just for the cloud storage, but that has not been released yet. Let's be, it's been very, very slow. It's part of the money that they released last year in, for law enforcement in the state of Illinois. So if that does become available, that would be certainly something we would apply for because one of the other issues and one of the significant expenses is the storage. We do have unlimited storage in this package. Not all agencies have unlimited storage, but as you can see, we have such high volume, and then we have 60,000 incidents a year, and we need unlimited data, storage. And so that certainly is part of the expense, and that, I think, is our number-one grant opportunity that might be able to mitigate that.
I've just always encouraged him. I've been sending him stuff, grants that come across my desk, you know, related to the DOJ resources, so.
Daily.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll close out the Committee of the Whole and call a regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Moyer, do you have an invocation?
I do not.
Okay. We'll move to roll call.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went. Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of executive session minutes of April 11, 2023, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on April 18, 2023. Second reading ordinances. 13.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class C licenses in the city at the request of Ria One LLC doing business as Gasland. Resolutions. 14.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the mutual aid box alarm system, MABUS, master agreement 2022, effective January 1, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Deconsent agenda?
Deconsent agenda.
Right, got it. Thank you. Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second meeting ordinances. 16.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to Article 3 zoning, Division 9, entitled Moline Center Districts by enacting an amendment to Chapter 35, Article 5, site improvement and performance standards, Division 1, parking and loading standards, Section 35-5100, entitled Off-Street Parking and Circulation Standards, and by enacting an amendment to Chapter 3, advertising and signs, Article 2, signs, Section 3-2105, signs allowed on private property with or without permits. Table 3-2105.2, entitled allowable sign area and specifications per lot of record by zoning district, by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as Section 35-3103, Moline Center Zone Map.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Moyer, seconded by Alderman Timian. Discussion. No questions? We've had questions answered by Mr. Vlog. Yes, Mr. Williams.
Does this pertain to during public comment, the same zoning that quarter?
Yes.
And what are we doing with that, again?
So the proposed zoning does have that to be rezoned from I-2 to GX-1, which is our, basically, the mixed-use zone that's within the Form-based code. So that is one of the only industrial properties that is remaining within the Form-based code zone that is to be rezoned. So, and Leslie Overholtzer is also on the phone as well.
And this is, it's one of the last items in the revised explanation.
Yes, yeah, so it kind of broke down why staff has concerns if this property is not rezoned. Primarily, it is close to McLaughlin and IH, those kind of office buildings that have been built there along River Drive. This next property is kind of a next reasonable location of where you'd see that type of development. It's fairly highly visible property. It's on the south side of River Drive. It is more likely to be redeveloped. So for all of those reasons, staff is recommending the what is before you this evening, which would be to rezone that parcel as well as the others in the Form-based Code area.
But to do anything with that piece of property, we'd have to meet with them, and obviously it's their property, correct?
Certainly. What I will say, though, is that this, and I mentioned this last time, that this is not only a regulatory document, it really is a planning document in terms of the fact that, you know, this, we're trying to set kind of the table for what we want to see on that side of the bridge as well as the rest of downtown. By removing that or by keeping that industrial, you're kind of breaking that area up. Furthermore, I will say that the code does state that, and it's actually quite a bit more flexible than our current code when it comes to nonconformities. So currently under a nonconforming ordinance, basically, you're limited on how you can expand quite drastically. What the Form-based Code would allow is that if you are in existing legal use, which this property is, on the day that this code would be enacted, that you can actually increase the nonconforming use on that site. In this case, that'd be an industrial use on that site, up to fifty percent, without having to come into compliance with the code, which is far greater than what our current code does. Furthermore, the code does state that that fifty percent resets every five years. So again, we tried very hard to not zone people out, but we also know that this is a twenty-year zoning document, and so we need to, you know, have some policy going forward of kind of what we want to see within that area.
Follow up.
So with that in place, that really won't tie their hands for use?
It won't tie their hands for use. What I will state is that oftentimes when properties are considered nonconforming, there is some concern of the property owner. It can cause some concerns when it comes to refinancing or financing of a property. Oftentimes, banks may ask for additional documentation or may not be willing to, you know, finance a property or refinance a property that is considered nonconforming. But that being said, like I said, I do believe that what is in the code is a reasonable compromise and a reasonable approach. Again, that we don't want to zone people out, but we also know that this area and the whole area of downtown really is up for redevelopment, and we want to ensure that our zoning code is lined up with the vision we want to see there.
And that's where we mix the concrete, or they mix the concrete for the bridge?
Yes.
So it was good to keep it heavy industrial when we needed it, but now when we go to turn it back to them, we want to rezone it and kind of tie their hands because of what we'd like to do in the future?
I mean, that's certainly one way to look at it. Another way I would say to look at it is, you know, I two is actually one of our more restrictive zoning districts. There's very few things you can do within an I two district. The GX zone opens up quite a bit of more uses. Now granted, it would limit the industrial use, but as I stated, the allowance of up to a fifty percent expansion without having to come into compliance with the Form-based Code is, I think, is a good compromise.
I'll just say they've always been good neighbors and good partners with us, and I can't support this.
Sir Vlog, can you just quickly remind me that this concern was brought up at the public hearing? So the Plan Commission heard this concern or no?
No. The first time I heard about this was after the public hearing of the, with the Plan Commission, I believe. We met with Riverstone on April sixth. Plan Commission had a public hearing on this on March twenty-second.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Your Honor.
Oh, I'm so sorry, didn't see you. Mr. Schmidt.
I think that initially I had shared some of Alderman Williams' concerns, but was able to have conversations with Bob and a lot more with Ryan. And I think that with the fifty percent ability to expand that business and to maintain that in that nonconforming use, I just think that that is a very good compromise. And I came to that because I think I had some of those initial concerns of making a major rezoning decision. But I think in this case, with the stipulations and how it is coming to pass, that really allayed my fears and made me feel like it was allowing them to continue with that usage, but also allowing us to have that vision of what we'd like that to be in the future if it does have a chance to develop at a later date.
Thank you. And if there's nothing further than roll call, please. Alderperson Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Muldrane.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
Macias.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, and that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Item eighteen point one, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by amending the following locations, extending Thirty-Sixth Avenue North Side from Forty-First Street East from forty feet to eighty feet. Eighteen point two, an ordinance amending Chapter Six Rights of Way and Public Property Uses of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter Six in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new Chapter Six dealing with the same subject matter. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you. So we're to miscellaneous business and my long lists. But there's just, as usual, a lot going on, lots to share. A couple updates, I'm not sure, for calendars. I'm not sure if you saw, but on May second, there is scheduled a farewell reception at five-thirty to six. We are meeting in the PD room that night when our new council members come on board, and we thank those stepping away for all of their service. So I just wanted to make sure you knew, come at five-thirty, right? Also, this weekend, there are a variety of neighborhood cleanups. I believe, it sounds like the neighborhood groups have this planned. I don't, KJ's not probably on tonight, but I know the Bluffs and Florciante Neighborhood Association are having neighborhood cleanup, so you could contact them for further details if you want to participate, or especially if they're in your wards. Today, I got a couple bits of news. One, we have been awarded twenty-twenty-two Tree City USA, so we'll pass this on to you, Mr. Griffith, and figure out how we can celebrate that further. I'll give that to you, Mr. Vitas. We also found out that Congressman Sorensen has chosen our application. I remember last week or the week before, I said we're looking at how we can get funding from congressional-directed spending. He's chosen our project to go after our project for lead service line replacement. So we remain hopeful that the House will pass that and we will be awarded money for that. On that national level as well, received what I think is, and I believe staff thinks is a disturbing update from Tom Cochrane, who is the head of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. First, it was a survey asking us how we have obligated our ARPA dollars and have we done it all, where are we at with the process? And this was to all the mayors that are part of the conference. Because at the national level, some congressional leadership is wanting to claw back unobligated dollars. And now today, I just forwarded to you an update that the Senate, Rick Scott of Florida is prepared to bring this to the Senate floor for a vote tomorrow. And so there's an urgent request to contact our senators to ask that clawback of unobligated ARPA dollars not happen. So I just thought you should know because, you know, we've made significant plans, and we were ahead of other local communities in terms of divvying up where all those dollars were going, and Carol and Bob have been on this since I alerted them last week. So I'll keep you informed what I hear from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, but that's a little bit scary. Also, calendar-wise, sorry, I jumped around, nothing but cakes. If you were on pop radio today, they were all over the airwaves helping them advertise their opening in Moline store. It's been open softly for a while, down by Walmart, but there is a ribbon cutting at nine AM on Friday. It's near McAllister's Deli and that kind of thing down there if you were interested in going. And also, there's a poverty conference next week that Reverend Ford and Project Now is hosting, and I know our staff is going, and I think you are for sure going, Alderman, Timian. Some lessons to be learned from Dubuque, who is all, the city of Dubuque, and how they've addressed some issues, and they happen to be people who were partnering for a time with our Human Rights Commission. So it's nice to see that symmetry in approaches to issues of poverty. Is this for fear?
It's coming up.
Okay, and there's more awards coming to our, to our department, so we'll have those formally brought forward when staff is prepared for that. I do have one last item I just want to make you aware of. I learned through some connections that there's been, there are some issues with the Lights On for Learning funding that has gone to local school districts, and that's, if you're not familiar with it, it's for after-school programming, especially our middle schools. It's an incredible program, Wilson and John Deere. The state has overspent by a significant amount, or the ISBE has, and so it's jeopardizing continued funding. So I did reach out to the chief. I reached out to Dr. Savage, superintendent today, just to let her know, to stay in contact with us, because certainly we want our youth to be engaged in positive activities in the after-school hours, and Lights On for Learning was a major part of helping to do that, and we know what happens when they don't have something to do. So I'm hoping if there's any way that the city can help in any way, or, you know, there are grants, again, that we find out about that could help, want to be in conversation with Dr. Savage. So that is all I have.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Moyer.
You get breakfast and lunch with that, by the way.
What?
Poverty Conference.
Are you going to?
Breakfast and lunch, yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, great.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next week, we'll be seating the new council?
No, May second.
Because I don't know if I'm going to be here next week, but I wanted to say, it's been great serving with you guys. Well, I don't know. I'm trying to get out of going overnight, as I always do with my job. Do we have an update on the McKinley property?
Other than the cleanup that took place, nothing at the moment.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't miss out on an opportunity to preserve green space in the city of Moline.
It's a six-acre site, so it's a pretty significant green space, actually.
You might have to bring that back during strategic planning. Bad thought.
All right. Slow, moving slow is good.
I mean, there has been interest in that property expressed even before we cleaned it, but, you know, we have not gone out yet to push any of those interests forward at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Muldrane.
We should talk.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Let's talk. We're going to talk.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sir Vitas or Dykis? Nothing from staff?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Is there any further public comment? If not, is there any executive session? No, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, seconded by Alderperson Macias. Roll call, please.
Six minutes.
Alderperson Moyer.
Aye.